Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 27th Regular Committee of the Whole Meeting. All councilors, with the exception of Council Franco and Council Overy, are present. Council Overy has had a family emergency. Calendar and Communications. Council Baumgartner?
Last week, I attended with Town Manager John Burt and Council David Atwater. Went up to Southington to visit Quantum BioPower, Connecticut's anaerobic digester. Right now, there are several municipalities interested, obviously, in looking at alternative uses for their food waste. As you know, food waste accounts for an estimate of 30 to 40 percent of food waste that currently goes to the incinerator up in Preston. And for the last few weeks, really months, we've engaged in discussions with SCARA. You know, SCARA's come and provided a presentation to us about their desire to diversify the way they manage food waste, solid waste, including food waste. And so, it was very insightful. It was actually my second visit I've done, and I look forward to continuing those discussions here on the council.
Thank you. Council Parker?
I attended the Aviation Day. Tried to volunteer, but start the rain off and on a lot, but it was a good day. I went to the Groton Public School Convocation along with Council Atwater and RTM member Dane Stevens. And I just signed the beam that will be going up at the middle school, and it will be at the Groton Public Library tomorrow for all to sign.
Very good. Council Heath?
I also signed the beam, and I attended the Airport Day with Council Parker.
Very good. Council Atwater?
I did go to Quantum BioPower, as Council Baumgartner said, and for a mere $18 million, we can buy one for Groton if we would like. They're quite expensive. I attended the Fitch Convocation on Monday morning. I attended the Retirement Board meeting a couple weeks ago. I attended a coffee at the Mystic No Ang Library on Saturday, the 10th of August, I guess.
Seventeenth?
That's the one coming up. This is the one that happened.
Same day as the airport?
The 17th.
Seventeenth is the one.
Fourteenth is the next one.
Oh, okay. All right. Anyway, there were about 15 people showed up. There were concerns about the flooding on Casino Road. One woman was concerned or asking about where we stood with the Oral School. There was even a competitor, I guess, there, someone who's running for council against us came. But what I did find interesting was that there was a woman who was quite pleased that we were having this meeting on a small scale. She said she didn't feel comfortable coming to the town meetings and being on television, so I thought that was worthwhile. I attended a CCM conference on the requirements for reporting child abuse, and I guess that's about it.
Council Schmidt?
I also went to the airport and to the coffee with the councilors at the Mystic No Ang Library, and that has been reported on. But I also attended an Executive Committee meeting of the Eastern Connecticut Tourism District. And in today's mail, I got a communication from Ed Dombroskas, who is the coordinator, and he said that he had a report on the media campaign report, which I want to share with everyone. And the bottom line is, we are doing really well. Our response is over double the standard measurement, and people are actually clicking through to the ads. During the reported period, we have had 9,469 Connecticut residents visit attractions in Mystic Country and 5,971 out-of-state residents visit Mystic Country attractions. We still have over two months of the campaign left to run. So, this is on receiving funding from the state at a very short period of time for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. We received a check on June 17th, 2019, which we were not able to spend for one week because of bank cricket regulations. But this had an impact of $7,300,000 into the Mystic Country, and I'm very proud of what we've been able to contribute. Thank you.
And thank you for your service on that board. Council Zepari?
No report.
Thank you. Yes, I will start with the meeting that Council Heath and I attended, Conservation Commission, where the commission is gearing up for the September 26th Educational Forum. And there are some really interesting things that they have planned, events for the family. There's going to be microscopes and hands-on exhibits and lots of learning. Aviation Day with Councils Parker, Heath, Schmidt, Permanent School Building Committee with a large contingent of community supporters advocating for solar panels for the middle school. There's a drainage issue in Deerfield that I would like Mr. Burt to address when we get done with our other event here. And then, today, Peggy Roberts from the Mystic Chamber wrote a letter saying that we will be having the 100th anniversary of the bridge, and the Chamber would like to do something to celebrate, so I said Groton's in. So, we're good on that. We have with us tonight Chief Usaro and Officer McClellan and our newest addition to public safety in the town of Groton. And if Chief and Officer McDonald would like to come on up to the podium, but not too close to Council Parker because she's allergic. And if you'd like to just tell us a little bit about how you came to have McDonald and why he's important.
Well, thank you for your indulgence for just a minute. To give you some background, first of all, you probably recognize Officer McClellan, but her partner McDonald has a pretty good pedigree himself, and I think Heather will be happy to tell you about him. But a number of months ago, Officer McClellan attended a conference, and it was a rather unfortunate conference in the sense that it was about officer suicides, police officer suicides that was held at the New York City Police Headquarters. And during her interaction there with some individuals, she was approached by a representative from Puppies Behind Bars, which is an organization out of New York State where they train canines for, or train service dogs, I should say, for first responders, for military veterans, for people suffering from PTSD. Officer McClellan's, one of her additional duties in our department is to be the representative that is in charge of officer wellness. Extremely important to us. Unfortunately, police officers across the country do take their own lives and deal with a lot of struggles because of their profession. And she's really been a leader in the state of Connecticut, not just in our department, but in the many efforts she's had on a statewide committee, as well as getting trained to do critical incident stress debriefing. And it just seemed like a great opportunity for her to get involved in this organization. They donated McDonald. The training was free. We were able to get housing there for her, so she attended this training at a prison in New York State that she can expound upon. But he's been well received. And the happy accident is that Officer McClellan is currently assigned to our community policing unit, so she goes to a lot of functions, does a lot of outreach at the senior center, the library. She'll be teaching dare soon, so McDonald is with her every day, and we've got the Mac and Max Show. And the great thing is, is his history and lineage that he carries forward into our department and the relationship with the New York City Police Department as a result of his namesake, who was certainly a champion for forgiveness. You want to share the story?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. So, back in the mid-'80s, Detective, or Officer McDonald at the time was on patrol and ended up getting shot and became a quadriplegic as a result of that injury. For the next three decades, he went around to prisons and basically anywhere he could to preach the idea of forgiveness and rehabilitation. He ended up forgiving his shooter, who was, I believe, 15 or 16 at the time. And he went to the prison where I ended up meeting McDonald and getting trained. And he spoke to the women there and really, you know, kind of pushed through that message of forgiveness and rehabilitation and really connected with them. And when he passed away two years ago from complications of that injury, the woman who trained McDonald, when he was born, she decided that we should name this dog after Detective. He was promoted posthumously to Detective. So, they named him after the detective who helped them out and came and spoke to them in the prison. So, he's got quite a legacy for us to kind of fill. But, you know, we had an opportunity at the graduation to meet his wife, Detective McDonald's wife, and his son, who's now a sergeant with the NYPD. And they are thrilled at the idea that he is going to go on and help officers in this capacity and also be kind of a bridge to the community, because that's really important to us, is, you know, not just helping ourselves and helping first responders, but it's a really, you know, having a dog is a really good tool to really bridge the gap with people. And, you know, just walking in here tonight, you know, the number of you that came up and, you know, wanted to see him and get introduced, it just goes to show you how accessible we can become, you know, with a dog like this. So, it's been really good so far.
And he's available to our partner agencies, certainly law enforcement, fire service, EMS, Town Council, any who may need the services of him. And we're real proud to have him as part of our team. And I think, the other thing that Heather didn't highlight is, he's really the first of a kind. There are service dogs like this out there in the community, but he's the first trained by Puppies Behind Bars to be with an active police officer in a wellness role as opposed to a PTS role. So, this is great, and, you know, trying to get the word out there. And he's available Saturday morning at our Coffee with a Cop at Starbucks. So, if anybody out there would like to meet him, or if you'd like to get more of a personal interaction with him, he'll be there.
Wonderful. Do any of the councilors wish to speak? I just want to say thank you. I know we had asked for you to do more community policing and outreach into the people out there, and this is a great way. So, we appreciate you finding this wonderful little pup.
Thank you. Thank you, August Department. I do want to draw a distinction. Unlike our other police canines, he's not trained to bite. He doesn't go out tracking people. He's really there for a lot of other reasons in that holistic approach to officer wellness and that community interaction that I think will benefit our town.
That's wonderful.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for bringing him on board.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, we are on to Item 4, Approval of Minutes, 2019, 525, July 23rd, 2019, Minutes, on Page 2. Council Baumgartner?
I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of July 23rd, 2019. So moved?
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Zepari. Is there discussion on the minutes? I'm seeing none. So, all those in favor of approval of the Minutes of July 23rd, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, and we are at seven councilors. Thank you. We are on to Item 5A on Page 13. Oh, Councilor, or, Mr. Burt, did you want to speak under Communications at all? I'm sorry, I skipped right over you.
You had asked about...
We can wait till other business unless you wanted to...
It doesn't matter. You had asked about the Deerfield Bridge. Do you want me to address that now or later?
Yeah, please, just really briefly.
Sure. A neighbor and the resident in the neighborhood of Deerfield Ridge where there's some development going on, had complained about sedimentation built up in the basins. And through the big storm events we've had lately, water was coming up into the street pretty significantly. So, Deb Jones and I went out there last week, met with the neighbor. She made contact with the developer, had some immediate basins cleaned. Then Public Works and Deb went out there, because she's our Soil Erosion Control Officer. She went out there, met again, took a look at the basins on Monday, met with the developer, and told them which other basins they want cleaned in the area. And he's hiring somebody to do that. Under state law, you have about, I guess it's 14 years to finish a development, so some of this can go on for a while. The biggest problem is, they've got kind of a channel dug for some sidewalks. They're waiting for some electric to go in, but the water's just gushing down, picking up materials, and that's the biggest issue. So, Deb's working with the developer on that, though. And just to mention, it was mentioned earlier about Casino Road, the flooding. Me and several staff, several departments, met with residents there to go over concerns. There's not a quick fix to that. It's been going on for years and years. But we are working on it, working with them. Public Works is going out to cut back some vegetation. There's an engineer involved looking at kind of options. We're looking at options. We're meeting at giving neighbors in about 48 weeks, somewhere in there. So, that was a good meeting.
Thank you. Okay, on to 5A, 2019, 479-1, Use of Broad-Spectrum Glycosate Herbicide, on Page 13. Council Parker, please. Oh, yeah, we don't have a motion. We don't have a motion. Okay, so we will open this up for discussion. We have discussed this before at a prior meeting. Mr. Burt, did you want to report anything out? I think we've all had a chance to read this. I'm not sure. Did you want to talk about the reading that you sent to us?
Just to mention, I was asked to just find out what DOT and Amtrak do. DOT do use a Roundup custom along guardrails and signposts, sign legs. I'd asked them how much, I was asked to find out how many linear feet they actually spray in town. They did not provide that. I asked multiple times. Amtrak never got back to me, but when you read, I'm pretty sure they use Roundup also. Not that I'm saying that that's right. That's what I'm seeing out there. And then, I know, I don't know what else. Gary, you were trying to make, you want to bring it up?
Director Schneider is here, and if you'd like to come up, please, because you've done a lot of the background on this force. Thank you.
I believe Gary was asked to maybe touch base with contractors, see what options are out there.
And I did, oh, excuse me. And I did. Right now is the busy season, so I could only get a hold of one of the landscapers. In fact, they have contracts with the town to do some of our pump stations. He would be interested in bidding a project for roadside mowing, which is cutting underneath the guardrails. But what he was not interested in, and I think several of contractors wouldn't be, is providing the traffic control. If we were to go out and mow under these with a contractor, we would use the same policy and procedure that we use when we hire our tree trimming firms, that we contract out with a separate firm for traffic control. They're called traffic directors. They have all the insurance and that. We direct them where to be, and they provide the traffic control then to the contractor. So, that really frees up either the tree trimming firm or the landscaper to do what they really do best, which is that type of work. There is no state law bid list for roadside mowing. We checked the state law bid lists several times. We found nothing, so the state doesn't have anything, you know, that we could tie into. Would other contractors be interested? Probably, we would bid this in late fall, early winter, when they're getting their work for the next season up, if we were to go with the roadside mowing. This is just underneath the guide rails, because we do the other portions, because most of that would be handwork then. I did contact, tried to contact several firms. Only one responded back, and that was our current vendor that applies the herbicide with licensed applicators and truck rigs. From what I can read from them, they are not interested in applying an organic herbicide. They're there to apply a straight herbicide, which is either Roundup, Rodeo, or there's some other custom blends out there, but all using the chemical that actually kills the plant on them. Would they be interested if you put it out to bid? I do not know. But I could not find anyone who'd be interested in this short notice to do the organic applications.
Thank you. I think everyone's had a chance to look over what was sent in the packet as far as alternatives that Mr. Burt referred to us in this lengthy packet here. And one of the alternatives on Page 17 is a d-limonene, which was what Mr. Schneider originally came back with, which is derived from orange peels. And it's very safe, and it kills off the leaves as well. It doesn't affect the roots, but it also is not carcinogenic. So, there's that. I don't know if any of you have questions regarding... Council Heath?
I think it's really important to do this, so it comes down to just how do we pull it off? If we go with the, like, what is it, d-limonene, would staff then have to put it out?
I'd first try to get a contractor to do that, because we have miles of roads of guide rail to make that application. And if you read the literature, it's several applications, whereas Roundup, the rodeo, or that product, it's usually one application a year that we put down. We would first try to find a contractor to do it, and then have it bid out and find a contractor to do that work first. The fallback would be the public workforceers would do it, but that'll take away from our other maintenance work. But we'd first try a contractor and then in-house forces then, if we can find anybody.
Counsel Atwater and Counsel Zepari, you're going to yield?
Yield, yeah.
I was just going to ask, is that work that can be done by, could we bring in seasonal people if we were down to that point of using staff?
We could. We could. I mean, Parks Maintenance has used seasonal personnel to do the mowing, so we could try that. I don't know if we'd get anyone, but we could definitely use that seasonal type help.
And I don't think we needed to determine the alternative method at this point. If you directed us to move forward with it, we would start with the bidding process, et cetera, and come back once we have a firm number later on. It would just be directing us to move in that direction.
Very good. So, Council Atwater and then Zepari.
Gary, has the application been done for this year?
No, it hasn't. We usually do it in mid-year, and so we have not. It's not critical this year that we do it, and because of the kill that we had in the previous years, so there's not much underneath the guide rails. Our fence lines are starting to get overgrown. But we have not applied anything on our guide rails or fence lines this year.
So, it would be possible to postpone a decision on this, postpone the application while we continue to... The reason I say that is that I did some research on my own or whatever, and I don't mean to be the devil's advocate, and I realize this is an issue. But a lot of what I was reading makes me wonder why we're just so anxious to rush into this and do it right away. First thing that I can say is that in May of 2016, a group of pesticide residue experts at WHO, World Health Organization, and the United Nations concluded that glyphosate is, quote, "unlikely to pose a carcinogenic risk to humans through their diets." And the most common way to get this is through diet. And then they went on to talk about Cheerios is one of the cereals that has it. And you'd have to eat, I think, something like 1,256 bowls of cereal a day in order to get enough to be carcinogenic. And I can go on and on with a lot of what's in here, but I just, I don't understand, I guess, why, when the state is using it, Amtrak is using it, that the little amount that we're going to use is not going to make any significant difference. I think it would, in my mind, be better to postpone the application this year and maybe look further into exactly what we're getting into. I think it's a lot of money to spend for something that's probably not going to do much good.
Counsel Zepari?
I think the first thing we have to look at is whether or not we want to continue using glyphosate. The, there has been a lot written on this. Now, the Environmental Protection Agency a long time ago said that glyphosate was not a carcinogen. However, the World Health Organization has declared that it is. And this is based largely on meta-analysis of a number of epidemiologic studies that show that people who are exposed frequently to glyphosate have a 41% greater chance of developing non-Hodgkin's lymphoma than to people who are not exposed. Until that is settled definitively, I think, as town leaders, we should be prepared to say that we're not going to use that chemical, because there's just too great a risk that people that are using it will become affected. Now, an occasional use, I think, reduces the probability greatly. But for hiring someone to go out there and cover five miles of road, I think that's what you said it was, around five miles of road with this material, I think is a protracted exposure for that person, and I think that we should step away from it. I think the, OSHA has not yet placed this material on hazardous materials list. There's no OSHA documentation for it. OSHA's only recommendation is that people wear eye protection and clothes that cover most of their skin surfaces to minimize the exposure. But I think that once we see that there's that much of an increase of risk for non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, we have a duty to say, we're not going to use that. That's just my two cents.
Counsel Baumgartner?
I'd definitely like to align myself with the remarks made by Council Zepari. I understand in the last meeting, I had asked a question about where exactly it is being applied, obviously, along the guardrails. And then, you had mentioned in some hard-to-reach areas that are kind of in the outside of, you know, the...
Correct. It's just underneath the guardrails, because the other roadside mowing is done with a mower, flail head, and it's along some of our fence lines, but in operational areas, like the wastewater treatment plant and back of the Public Works facility here. We do not apply it near schools. We do not apply it near streams or any of that stuff. We're very cognizant of where to apply this. Playgrounds, we don't do anything. Parks, we don't do anything with that. So, just along those metal structures, which are our fence lines and the operational areas and guide rails, guardrails.
Now, are there any areas where you could also plant, non-invasive plants, so...
These are very small areas underneath the guide rails. We're only looking at a five-foot strip off the edge of the road, so it really doesn't, and there really is not a large area to plant something. Second, we do use road salt. Anything that we put there needs to be salt tolerant, and we're careful with what grasses we plant further on. But we don't use this product on any of our mowings. We, the Public Works Department maintains two closed landfills, but those are mowed maybe twice a year just to control the brush on top of the landfill, so we don't use any type of chemical, you know, applications up in any of those areas. So, it'd be really hard to plant underneath a rail something that could be maintained, and that wouldn't get it, and the weeds wouldn't slowly encroach into. We'd be mowing it.
Anyone who hasn't spoken yet, want to speak? Could you use, like, a clover ground cover under there and just plant it real densely and put it right under the rails? Or would that be killed off by the road salt as well?
It may be killed off by the road salt. I don't know of any type of application like that. That doesn't mean that there isn't. I know in Europe, they have mowers that go underneath the guide rails and that, but their spacing of their supports is about 20 feet in between, and the stuff that we've seen does it. Our guide rail supports are a lot closer than that, per standard. We have planted clovers and that up on our landfills or our area. In fact, in back of Public Works, we have an area back here by the animal shelter across where we did plant wildflowers and clover when we did have the project finished. So, it's so hard to get that stuff underneath the guide rails and that for something to grow. And then, the issue is to get it established watering.
So, then, what Mr. Burt is looking for from us tonight is just consensus to either stop using it or keep using it. So, does anyone else have questions, or are you ready to give guidance to town staff? Counsel Baumgartner?
I'd definitely support a ban, and I understand the kind of cost restrictions behind kind of handmowing. But if, you know, we're able to use an organic herbicide that obviously has, you know, no, you know, poor, bad impact on the environment, I'd support it.
Clarifying question?
Yes.
You haven't done anything this year, correct?
Correct.
So, if it can wait a year to figure this out?
Correct.
So, we need to bid it in the late fall, early winter.
Right. We'd want to bid it in that cycle so we could get into the contractors we're relying for next work.
So, you want to bid it for this...
For this, we have to bid it this fall, early winter, for the next spring.
Right.
So, you do need an answer from us?
The next, so...
Two, three months.
Yeah, the decision can't wait to next year, because then it'll be till next year.
So, a response can be done by October, and you'll still be okay within that season? Or is it too late? Or you need to know something by the end of September?
I think October would probably be okay.
And you said you're...
I'm adamantly in favor of...
Well, I'm adamantly in favor of telling us.
Yeah, I'm definitely opposed to the use of the Roundup.
I, I think it's a waste of money. I don't, I think we should look into it more rather than making a decision now, but that's, that's my own feeling.
And I agree with David.
I'm opposed to the use of Roundup until we can show that it is harmless.
So we have a majority in favor of the discontinuing use of Roundup? Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Schneider, are you here for anything else to say?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for bringing the beam over as well. All right, we are on to 5B, 2019-425 Credit Card Processing for Town Departments on page 24. And I'm not sure if we have a motion on this. We do have a motion on this one. Counselor Parker, did you want to read this one?
Okay.
Thank you. Page 26, Emily.
Motion to recommend a resolution to allow credit cards as an acceptable form of payment for any department with a need using town merchant processing accounts that have been integrated with the Tyler Munis ERP software currently being implemented and to create a single line item in the budget where both expenses and revenues related to processing fees are placed. I so moved.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Heed. And are you here for any of this? Madam Clerk, Mr. Locken from Parks and Rec, and Madam Clerk from the Town Clerk's Office, if you both would like to come up. And you could provide us with some background if you'd like. If you just want to introduce yourself for the viewing audience, please, Mr. Locken.
All right, Jerry Locken, the Manager of Recreation Services, Groton Parks and Recreation.
Betsy McCoucher, Town Clerk for the town of Groton. Thank you. Tell us what you'd like us to know.
Well, um, the, the town has a, an opportunity with the implementation of new software that's going to do many of the functions that, um, that departments currently use to, for cashiering or for permitting or a number of different things. The new system has the capability of allowing credit card payments to, as a, as a form of tender. Right now, there are certain departments in the town that do use credit cards. The Town Clerk's Office, you can pay by credit card using a, a particular third-party service. Groton Parks and Recreation, the golf course, the senior center. We've been taking credit card payments for about 10 years. We do that online, and we do that through a merchant services account that we have ourselves. The, the tax office, you could pay your property tax bill by going to a, kind of a standalone computer over there and making a payment and paying an extra fee to, to do that. What the new software will allow us to do is, is to take some of those things and, and allow us to incorporate that into the, kind of into the fabric. It's integrated in with the, with the processing of, of various transactions. It also would allow departments that are currently not accepting credit cards, uh, a means of accepting them. The transfer station, you know, if you, if you go to the transfer station to pay your dumping fee out there, you could potentially pay your fee with a credit card. You could go to the town hall annex here and buy, um, your electrical permit or your building permit or your, you know, permits with that as well. Even, you know, potentially the library, the police, any other department that would have a, a need for accepting credit card payments, this would allow them the opportunity to do that.
Okay. Mr. Burt, did you want to add anything?
No, other than, you know, I'm very interested in getting credit cards throughout other departments, especially at transfer station. We get a lot of comments on that, people going out there and realizing, "Oh, I need to have cash here to get a permit," or have to go to back out to the annex. So it's something interesting. I just don't wanna see the town... There are other options, third-party, or to pass a fee to account for the credit card fees. I just don't wanna see the town be reduced in the amount of revenue we receive, though that is happening currently in parks, but that's ongoing for, I'm not saying to change how it's been done for a long time, so.
Madam Clerk, did you wish to speak?
You did a great job at explaining, because Tyler, Tyler Technologies is the company that, that is going to be overall, overhauling our financial, um, business, so payroll and from payroll to, to our taxes being distributed. But for, for our office, for the Town Clerk's Office, and I can speak for other offices too, we, you know, we are in an age that credit cards or debit cards are expected at any purchase. So at any given day, I have to turn away people for them to, to go every, every day. At least 80% of people that come to the counter have not checked first what our payment, payments are. We do not take credit cards at the counter. Just to correct Jerry for just a bit, we do have a service called Vital Check, which is a LexisNexis company. And it's utilized by the State Department of Health. They use the same company for all vital record purchases through the internet. I can tell you that, uh, the probate court system uses a Vital Check also, so it's a very trusted company. Now, I'm not a technology person, and I'm not a finance person. I'm a town clerk. So my, my needs are to have point-of-sale POS credit cards. And I have had the opportunity to do this tomorrow, and I could still do it tomorrow. But I think it's more important to have the entire town doing the same thing. I don't think every department should be doing something different. And Jerry and I totally agree with that. We just do not wanna see that, you know? So where I have a, a concern with the proposal that, that, um, that we have, or you have in front of you, is a fund being set up of taxpayer money to, to fund people's, to fund citizens or, or not even, they may not even be citizens of the town. They may just be using our services, their credit card fees. I, I think we're all used to paying our own credit card fees when we go to an ATM machine, say, you know? It's $2 to use their machine. So, um, so I, I really am not interested as a taxpayer seeing my money being paid for Juliet's daughter to take piano lessons, or, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't like that idea at all. And I don't think that many people would agree with that. They'd, they'd see a moral issue. It's not illegal. It absolutely is not. It's, it's not just in our state. It's all over the country. Parks and Rec programs, there's softwares that are set up to do this. So it's, it's very accepted all, all, all over. I just, I think it's bad practice for us to do that. I, I can't change the fee of a, of a vital record or, or any, anything that I, that I have a fee associated with. It's all state statute-driven, and so I can't say, "Oh, a $2, you know, certification will be now $1.89" because I have to make up for that fee for the credit card." You say, "I'm trying to make it as easy to understand." So I, I, I've been trying to get Vital Check throughout the entire town, because I'm, I've been using them for nine years, and it's easy. It's, could be even easier. It could be all automated, one step, one button, one button, no, no checks being printed or deposited, or double entries from one machine to another. We're gonna, we don't do any of that. So, uh, but there's an issue with software. So Tyler Industries, Tyler Technologies has, has a, has a certain protocol that any software would have to meet, any company would have to meet, and my understanding is they're not meeting something. You understand that?
So just for clarification purposes, what Betsy is talking about is there are, there are things that people would pay for that it's arguably not right for citizens to pay the, the fee. If somebody wants to buy a permit or something like that, when the town charges $100, the town would like to get $100 and pass on whatever processing fees to the customer. So the customer would end up paying more. The system that is proposed in this, in this referral document has the ability to do that. We work, we have, we can contract with a credit card company to integrate with Tyler that would add on fees for services that we would like to. Parks and Recreation, we choose to pay those fees. We don't, we choose to pay those fees just out of kind of a, a general, out of, out of all of the fees that we receive. That's a cost of doing business for us. That model works for Parks and Recreation, but it likely doesn't work for other departments, so you'd wanna pass those fees on. This proposal allows us to do that. So the town has the ability to charge for the service and add on an additional fee if that's what, if that's the policy decision that's made for a particular department or a particular purchase. So I think it...
Yeah, that's, what he's talking about is a third-person, a third-party proposal. So...
No.
The town, yeah, 'cause we, we can't, the town cannot pass on a fee. It has to be the credit card company.
I'm sorry, but we do have a town's attorney opinion that says we can pass on third-party, or pass on processing fees to customers.
Right, they're not ours.
Okay, so, so thank you. Thank both of you. Um, I, just for clarification...
That's what it reads.
One of the items that was given to us in the description here, um, Mr. Locken talked about the Parks and Rec fee, which is a relatively small fee, which is like a $2 fee. However, if you go to the tax office, you don't wanna eat the fees for someone paying your taxes on a $200,000 house, right? So then you need, the town needs the flexibility to be able to adjust. Um, you can't just say straight up, "We're gonna do this, or we're gonna do this," because you don't wanna have, you know, that sort of situation where Andre's paying for someone to use, or Counselor Baumgartner is paying for someone to use a credit card to pay their bill when it's their choice. So they should bear the, they should bear that fee rather than all of us bearing that fee. Mr. Burt, so the staff opinion is for Alternative 1 that you have laid out here on page 26, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so the motion reflects Alternative 1?
And I, you know, I think as we get into each department, we'll probably have to look at the legalities, though. You know, there might be something on a particular fee that we can't pass. I think generally we can pass the fees on. Though my understanding is it has to be, one credit card has a certain fee, another credit card has another fee. Kind of have to figure out what an average would be. Is that right?
The town's attorney opinion suggested that the best way to pass along those fees, since every, um, for me to use my credit card, for Betsy to use her credit card, we all have different credit cards, and they all charge different rates. The, the town's attorney suggests that you take an aggregate of, of what you're being charged and pass along, you know, a fraction of that to each user to kind of, at the end of the year, end up net zero, so that all of the fees that we pass on are all of the fees that we're being charged. We can't do that individually for each individual transaction, but we can do that, you know, when, when things are aggregated, we can get very close to net zero.
Okay. Do counselors have questions? No questions. Counselor Heed.
Actually, you answered my question, so I just wanna say I would support passing along the, the fee to the customer. Just wanna be clear on that.
Very good. Anyone else?
I think we should be able to pass the fee along.
Thank you. Counselor Baumgartner.
So can you again describe the current, um, lack of uniformity amongst the system? I know arguably, um, you know, you, both of your respective offices interface with the public the most compared to any other office in town government.
Right, so the differences are...
Probably there's a greatest need for credit cards.
The differences are that we have a variety of software packages that are available to town departments. The needs in the Town Clerk, Clerk's Office are different from Parks and Recreation. About 10 years ago, Parks and Recreation chose to go with a particular software vendor, and that led us down the path of, of accepting credit cards in, in a particular way with a particular vendor. With the Town Clerk's Office, they've chosen to go with a third-party provider, LexisNexis, that is the national standard, and certainly the standard that's being used around the state for these purposes. And it's a third-party provider, so rather than doing it themselves, they're working with a third-party provider. The tax office has, um, the, the tax software that we use to bill people has its own integration, so they're using a different third-party provider. So there is, I guess, the research that I've done shows that there, there is no single provider that's going to work in every single department with every individual piece of software. What's being proposed here is a, is a, is an opportunity for those company, or those departments that don't have credit card ability to use the new software that's going to be used town-wide to accept credit cards for payment in whatever way that they would like to do. So if, if it's integrated with like a Parks and Recreation operation where somebody goes online and, and registers for a class, that's pretty specific software that isn't, has no use at the library, has no use at the police station, has no use in public works. So we're kind of constrained in those situations, but in other cases where we're just kind of operating a cash drawer or a point-of-sale service, and it doesn't really matter who the provider is, that's a, a general opportunity that all the other departments, the transfer station or the, uh, the folks over here at Planning or, you know, those folks will be able to use.
So in that respect, wouldn't it make more sense for those types of departments to kind of jointly utilize the same software to potentially, you know?
Correct. To use the cashiering system in the Munis software that the town is currently working to implement. That's correct.
So we wouldn't need to issue an RFP for services?
No, the RFP's already been issued. The town is already working with Tyler Munis software.
Thank you.
My, my only question is, it shouldn't cost the town anything to implement a point-of-sale? All the equipment that I've ever had was always provided, and that's what I was told that it should be, it should be provided, because they're, the, the company, the Munis, would be making the fee off of, of each customer, so they're getting paid already. So I don't know if there's a fee. Is there a fee? I don't know. I haven't seen the RFP.
So just, and I don't wanna create too many, uh, create too many questions for a pretty, pretty complicated set of things. Tyler Munis is the software system. Munis, Tyler Munis does not process, process credit card payments. They work with a credit card processing company to make the payments happen. So it's like using PayPal. Uh, you know, if you're using PayPal, PayPal is your credit card processor. Tyler Munis has two particular companies they work with that are integrated fully with their software. We would be choosing one of those two companies, credit card processing companies, to work with. Tyler would, would work with those companies, and to Betsy's point, with those credit card companies, we have two of them competing for our business, in a sense. I would be asking both of those to submit their best proposal for what's the lowest rate? Who's gonna provide the best equipment at the lowest cost that's going to be reliable, and those kinds of things? And that's a decision we would make. You know, that's, that's, that's the next decision we would make if, if the council chooses to move forward.
And after that, 10 years from now, we'll be talking about taking payments in the form of cryptocurrencies. Perhaps.
Just a wink of an eye.
So I agree with Counselor Schmidt and Heed that the cost for using the plastic should be borne by the, by the user. But I am in favor of Alternative 1. Are there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, are we prepared to vote on 2019-425 Credit Card Processing for Town Departments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, and again, we are at seven. Thank you very much. We are on to 5C, 2019-524 School Closure Policy. This is on page 27, and do we leave off? Counselor Heed?
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the school closure policy. I so moved.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Parker. And before we start discussion, I just wanted to thank all the people that served on the committee. Town staff, of course, Dr. Grenier, Mr. Pritchard from the Planning Commission, and Mr. Zod, Chairman Watson, Mr. Reiner, and Representative Bordelon, Portia Bordelon from the RTM, served on the commission as well for the task force. Did you want to present, Mr. Burt?
As you remember, we didn't have a set procedure for what happens, especially on the Board of Ed side, when a school is, is being looked at for potential closure and then whatever we're gonna do with the next sale or what, keeping it, whatever else. So we informed that committee to review the process, develop the process, what you see before you. It's really just making sure these schools, first of all, if you decide to close it, making sure it gets maintained, that the utilities are left on. making sure it gets maintained, that the utilities are left on, so it doesn't deteriorate, um, then it gets turned over to us. We go through our surplus property committee process, make, you know, making recommendations to the town council on selling it or using it for a town purpose, or a split purpose, or whatever. Um, so it's really pretty common sense, just making sure that they're well-maintained until we decide what to do with them, so.
And the way it was structured was, um, the, the policy, that's mainly the text, is what the Board of Ed would do, then what the town would do, and then they called for, um, the overview, the graphic overview with the workflow. And, uh, what we would like is for the council to offer any suggestions for change, if there's anything that you feel that you need to add, or if you have questions about any of it before we say to staff to finish it up and bring it back to us. So do you have comments or suggestions, questions on any of it? Counselor Saper.
Uh, I think that, you know, it's, we have a problem with schools, closed schools hanging around, uh, becoming themselves blighted and a source of blight for the community. I think this is a, an attempt to expeditiously move the, this property along and put it back on the tax roads as developed property. And I am strongly in favor of going ahead with these measures.
Okay. Anyone else? Just, just so you know that, um, it's not necessarily going to have every school property sold, um, but it's just the disposition, when it's going to happen, to give everybody a timeframe-
Right.
-and to make sure that everyone's forthcoming with the information that they have on a particular building, that way everyone is aware of what's going on and kind of all on the same page and can progress things a little more smoothly. Councilor Heath?
So I don't know who to, uh, refer questions to.
You're going to-
Mr. Burt. Um, so this policy basically will prevent schools from deteriorating, from being neglected, from, uh, the heat not being left on-
Right.
-a lot of mildew showing up all over everything. Um, so as long as it accomplishes that, keeps the building sort of alive until, uh, dispensation is decided, uh, then, then this is good. Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Um, briefly, in section, uh, Town Section C, uh, the Property Surquest Committee reviews and makes a recommendation to council as to whether there is a town use for school or whether it should be sold. There is nothing, um, I, I think it's lacking public input or participation in terms of how a property should be used. I think that, um, input is incredibly valuable to have, um, for residents and, um, particular surrounding, uh, property owners and residents within that neighborhood where that school is, um, that they have the ability to chime in on, on how, uh, that, uh, property should be utilized in the future. Um, so I, I didn't see any language there, um, or perhaps I-
Can I speak to that real quick?
Yes.
Just that we also have separate rules for the Property Surquest Committee that they send it, you know, they have the ability to do that as well as send it to any other committees that may want to chime in, so there's some flexibility there. Besides, when things come forward here, you'd likely have public care and some other things, but, um, each, each one's, and I don't want to get too in the weeds just because each one's different, so one of the-
But we do have other policies out there that cover some of this. And then, um, Leslie, more of a question, um, were there two or three issues that were identified that, you know, you looked at all of the previous school buildings that were, um, the town took over? Um, could you identify maybe two or three issues where the town, um, you know, there was a, a lack of agreement with the Board of Ed, or just someone dropped the ball on an issue?
I don't, I think it was just that Board of Ed typically didn't keep the utilities going, and neither did the town either, for that matter, once there wasn't a use. I don't think either side particularly, in the past, was all about saving money, and, and, uh, that wasn't budgeted, so I think this is ensuring that, that's a big issue, going there's still moldy, you know? Of course, most of these buildings are awkward and aren't really reused, but some of them can be, you know, such as the, uh, Grand Paints Building. So we want to keep utilities on until we know for sure what's happening with them. We want to keep them in good condition.
And for, um, at least for the more recent, um, property dispositions, call it that, um, were people, you know, the Board of Ed in particular, were they, at times, were they slow to, um, move out of the facility? Or is there some lag time there?
I, not since I've been here, you know, and I think Dr. Grineer has worked hard with me and town staff to change that. I think in the past, there's been some, you know, Pleasant Valley took a while, but I tell you, we just did tour Pleasant Valley the other day, and, uh, yeah, pretty much every, there's just a few things left in there. Brought mold people in to clean, they, you know, they did a really good job, did some cleaning outside, they've got another, the volunteer group coming in this week to finish up outside, um, and they're, they're actually going to cover the cost this year for the electric and heat, so it was nice, but, so I think things have been changing. I think it's been an issue in the past from what I've heard, but not so much since I've seen buildings turned over. I'm very encouraged enough to keep them in good condition.
I know.
But also bear in mind that the Board of Ed has bought into this, and they have to continue to buy into this, because the rules under their section are, you know, they're controlled by their Board of Ed, so, but they have bought into that, you know, Dr. Grineer participated, Kim Watson has reviewed, so, and they authorized, I think upfront, they voted on proceeding with something like this, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was a nice group of stakeholders, really, that all worked together on it, so it worked out well. Any other councilors have questions on this? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of recommending a resolution to approve the school's closure policy, 2019-524, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 5D, 2019-526 Resilience and Sustainability Position, on page 31. Counselor Atwater.
To recommend a resolution directing the town manager to create a job description for a new dedicated resilience and sustainability position. ISO move.
Second.
Moved by Atwater and seconded by Baumgartner. So this was something that, um, I raised, and there were some, um, there was some information that came out to us. Um, so currently, um, there is a sustainability person on staff, however, they have not been working in the area of sustainability, they were moved, um, and are working on another task. So for several years, we haven't had anybody doing sustainability for the town, despite the fact that there is a job description out there that calls for sustainability work to be done. So the question becomes, do we write a new job description, authorize a new position for that role? Um, and I am in favor, clearly, of creating a new position, um, for someone who would be designated solely for sustainability and would not be used to manage other tasks. The reason why, perfect example, is what we just went through with the permanent school building committee and the solar panels. If we had someone that was working in sustainability, we might not be in a situation where we have three new buildings going up, and they're not carbon neutral. So I would like to get someone on staff and move us forward in the right direction and making Groton more sustainable and ideally carbon neutral. So I don't know if any of the rest of you, Mr. Burt?
I was just going to point out that this just is basically saying you're generally in favor of doing it. We then have to write the job description, come up with a pay scale, then come back and present that to the council. So there'll be another step to it.
Counselor Saper.
I'm a little concerned about the cost of this. It's a 30-year plan to get to carbon neutral. Presumably, this person will be somewhere between $60,000 and $100,000 a year. And I also presume that this is, this person is going to need, uh, secretarial support and clerical support. So we're talking about something that's going to get into the millions of dollars. The carbon neutral approaches are well-known. I mean, we just have to make a decision that we want to employ them widespread, and, and we could avoid having that extra expense on the taxpayers. But putting in, uh, solar panels and, uh, uh, using, uh, uh, you know, we'd have to make decisions specifically about using lower, uh, uh, fuel consumption vehicles, uh, but I think, I think the, uh, the methods are known, and we can employ them. Uh, I don't know that we need someone that's going to be there as a full-time person drawing a high-powered salary, uh, to tell us, "Oh yeah, you should put in solar panels on the roofs of the schools." So that's, that's my only concern.
Counselor Schmidt. And then Baumgartner.
We do have a wonderful report that was made, um, I think in 2011, the Peregrine Report, and all of the buildings were examined detailed, uh, recommendations were made on how these could become, uh, more energy efficient, and what the costs were going to be for each one. And we did meet, we had a committee, and we did meet, and then the subsequent council decided that that was no longer necessary. But, uh, we do have all of those, all that information available on all of the buildings, including the school buildings and the town-owned buildings. And I think what we're trying to approach is the, um, new buildings that go up, and that would be something that would be beyond that scope, but it does need some consideration so that we do put in the proper safeguards.
Counselor Baumgartner, and then Atwater, and then Heath.
So ideally, you, by building, uh, carbon neutral, uh, building facilities and, uh, in infrastructure that is resilient, um, in the long term, it should be cost-neutral in that you create efficiencies, um, you use less energy, um, because obviously fuel and, um, you know, in the case of the schools, um, it's powered by fuel and, and in some cases, natural gas, and there's a cost to that. And by identifying, um, alternative uses of, of energy such as solar, um, you know, you can, uh, long-term, bring down the costs of, of supplying, uh, you know, energy to, to our schools. And so you can do it obviously to, to other buildings as well, especially when we look to, um, look to, you know, extend our, um, extend the, uh, the community building for additional uses. And so I'm supportive of it. I, I think we are certainly lacking of an individual who can implement policies that we're looking to, you know, to bring home in the, you know, whether it's, um, doubling down on, on, on plastics, um, you know, conserving our, um, you know, our watersheds and our open spaces, and, and developing relationships with, um, our, um, conservation community to identify where we need to protect, um, our, our resources and our, our environment as a whole. Um, and I don't think we have that person right now. We don't have someone internally that we, uh, can go to to talk about anaerobic digestors. Uh, we don't have someone internally to talk about, again, the importance of, of providing, uh, charging stations, um, to, uh, the future, uh, you know, drivers of, of, uh, you know, Groton who will be using electric vehicles. These are things that we will confront in the next 10, 15 years, and, um, we need to be ahead of that curve, because we're, again, the biggest municipality, uh, you know, east of New Haven, uh, along the, you know, Long Island Sound, and we, uh, we really should be leaders in, in that respect on, on these issues. So I think having that person who's focused on that works in, you know, in tandem with the, uh, the town manager, as well as a public works department, um, the, um, Planning Department, um, can kind of cross-pollinate all these different departments and identify how, kind of collectively, we can become more sustainable in the future. So I think in the long term, uh, it will be a cost savings, um, and I, I should kind of look at it, you know, uh, look at it in that respect.
Counselor Atwater, Heath?
I guess I'd like to go back, uh, a little, and I have in front of me a job description that was written back in March of 2015, or 2015, um, yeah, 2015, um, which was for a position of Sustainability Program Project Manager. And I understand that this, I assume that someone was hired for this position, um, there's essential duties and responsibilities, including developing a, a program to reduce energy in the town, a sustainability action plan, et cetera, et cetera. It was two and a half pages of, of basically description and qualification. So it seems to me modifying this rather than writing a whole new one would make more sense. It would, it would certainly be more cost-effective than not spending hours to do otherwise. But I guess my, my real question is, were any of the, I, I'm assuming, I, I, this is a, that this person went to, to work on the schools, which were voted in 2016, so that means they didn't really start until 2017, so there's two years of, of time past. What, what reports do we have? Do we have a, a sustainability action plan? Um, do we have, uh, I don't know, any of these provided leadership for broad and diverse set of stakeholders? Have we ensured connection to sustainability in all aspects of it? What took place in the two years prior to-
Well, I, you know, I'm at a little bit of a loss, just because I wasn't here during that time. Um, that was before, I came in right when he was transitioning to the schools. Um, I could tell you there's not a sustainability action plan that was completed during that time, nor a vulnerability assessment. I do know, you know, different, a lot was grant-focused, is my understanding. For instance, we've got some electric vehicles, we get, received through grants, as well as the charging stations we put in, that type of thing. I know solar's been looked at the landfill a few times, it hasn't made sense yet, but they're really, have been really looking at it. That type of thing's been more of the focus, is my understanding.
So I, I guess, um, to agree with Counselor Saper, that, um, we're, we'll be spending a lot of money for this, what's, what's to prevent someone who's hired, and then two years from now, there's a, another project, and they get yanked off of this and on, and on to that. Um, I, I mean, it seems to me that we have a pretty good job description that needs some tweaking, and there should be money already in the budget for this position, I'm assuming, and it was that-
No, once he was transferred to the schools, all the money for his position was taken out of the general fund and is now out of the school budget, out of the school project budget.
So we would have to put money back anywhere.
So we don't have a, we really do not have a sustainability person at this point.
And I do question, I guess, if, if all of these things are, that are happening in the world, and so, is this really a full-time position? Would we need someone 24/7 doing sustainability and resilience?
Depends on how broad you want to go to. For instance, if you want to get more, more into resilience, because the current position hasn't been involved in resilience, do you want to go more with committees? Do you want someone to help head up, you know, or be staff to committees? And, you know, it's all what the, how far into it the council wants to get. It could be, none of it, it could be all the way in, you know, so it's really a council-driven thing.
Okay, I, I guess I would, I would strongly recommend that we work off of the previous job description rather than spending time to do a whole new one.
And that would probably be the base, I would take that, and we tweak it from there. And, and I don't have the salaries with me, but the current position, I think Joe's pretty close, Counselor Saper's pretty close, it's, I think it's in the mid-60s to low-90s is the current position. Um, if you're going to start broadening to someone who's actually an expert in things like resilience, you're going to up the, you're going to add duties on, and it's going to be higher than that, plus benefits, just so you have an idea.
Counselor Heath, and then Parker.
A couple things. The best job description I've been able to find online, uh, so far, uh, City of Santa Monica has a Senior Sustainability Analyst, and it pays $93,000 to $115,000. But what's striking in the job description is that it goes into what are the, the goals, and there, there are some measures, uh, including 30 years to go carbon neutral. Um, and if we, well, I want to go in two different ways at the same time, uh, sorry about that. Let me stay focused on the first way. Uh, I feel like there needs to be a point person, um, maybe not full-time, uh, maybe somebody who's even shared with surrounding municipalities, but there should be a point person to be at the table when we're discussing, uh, public works projects, um, because we spend a lot of money, for example, for the schools, and they are not carbon neutral. And although there's been some attention given to, um, being more efficient and saving money, uh, there's no, in my impression, uh, there was no, uh, emphasis on being, uh, carbon neutral, but there were efforts made to sort of go in that direction. Um, but without a point person, I, I don't think that it would be achieved, and, and it's not that you ever get to that point, but it's that you have goals. Um, and that's what the person, uh, the individual would, would, I think, help accomplish. Um, so I, I was a little surprised when we came in and started digging into the school project, that, um, there is very limited roof space to even put solar panels on to heat water or to generate electricity. And then up in, it's Mansfield, there, they have a school, uh, that's going to be built, um, assuming it passes the referendum, uh, that will be entirely carbon neutral, so it can be done, uh, it just has to be a priority. Uh, so I agree, you need to rewrite the existing, um, job description. Um, and now if I step back for a second, we've also talked about some other challenges that have been going on, and this might- have been going on, and this might be a good time to consider evaluating current positions and redeploying people, because I think if there's too much on person A's plate, they won't get to it. And that's just the reality, you have eight hours in your workday, and if you have 12 hours of work, you can't do it. So I think separating some things out, maybe streamlining, might help the staff as well.
Counselor Parker.
I agree with Counselors Zepari about budget, so does that mean we're going to try to put this within the budget for next year? Because as you said, currently, he's under, the person's position is under the school, which still boils down to being under the city, I mean, town of Groton. But my concern is that we already have a position, though it's not budgeted, we already have a position there, we just need to fund it. So how would we fund this position?
Need tax dollars. So if you did it mid-year, you'd have to look at the contingency fund, or fund balance.
How does that affect us in the end?
If they start the process of developing the job description now, it could be written into next year's budget, so we wouldn't necessarily have to do it for this fiscal year. But it does need to be started, if this is something we want, we need to start the process now, because they start their budget in December. So we need to have something in place so that they can allocate for that position.
We already have something in place, they just need to tweak the job description, correct? We just have to find the funds. But in the end, we're going to be adding more to the tax, taxes, when we've been trying to keep a level field, correct? Am I wrong in assuming that?
No, would be a staff position added, because the current person who's in the role right now is not doing that job, not, not through their fault, of their own. They were directed by prior councils and staff to do a different job. So even though there is a sustainability position there, there's no one doing sustainability work.
Is this person going to need additional help, depending on the route we take, which means more budgeting funds that we are not sure we can budget? Are we tweaking somewhere else?
I wouldn't expect it. I mean, of course, council would always lay on a huge list, and that could change things, but I wouldn't expect to have to add any secretaries, administrative staff.
But this position could potentially be between $60,000 and $90,000.
That's the current, my guess is.
As a full-time person.
I can tell you, all our top positions, we're not pulling applicants right now. If we want someone really qualified, it's probably going to go up, we're probably going to add some duties, and it's probably going to go up some. Not a lot, but a little bit.
So at the Conservation Commission meeting, we were discussing this, and one of the members talked about the money that the town will be saving with the plastics reduction, and they floated the suggestion that, you know, the savings from the plastic reduction would offset that. The other thing that Counselor Schmidt raised was about the documents that we have currently, and the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force has all those documents. The unfortunate thing is, they've just been sitting there. No one's done anything with them. And it's been at a good, what, 2011 is when the last commission existed, the Energy Conservation Commission?
That sounds right. And we used to have a report every month on what was being done by the town, and what the costs were for gasoline, for diesel, for electricity, and how that was somehow being changed so that we were benefiting from the, you know, the changes that were being made, that were made right along as things could be done. Unfortunately, it seemed that the one things that could be done were those inexpensive things, but at least it was a start, and we knew what had to be done. And I'm assuming that that report still exists, and that it would be easy to look at it and to get those same figures back to a committee, so that they could work with it.
So the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force has all of those documents, but they are a group of volunteers, they're eminently qualified volunteers, but they are volunteers. So there's only so much that we can, so much of a burden we can place on them. They are more than willing to help us to get to the place where we want to be, as far as carbon neutral, and, you know, doing resiliency work along the shoreline, all of these types of things, but they are volunteers. So I am strongly suggesting that we need a professional on staff that can kind of oversee everything, and staff the planning, and staff the resilience task force, and all these different things, and I think it is worthwhile in the long run. Counselor Roan Gardner.
Just to clarify, who would issue those reports? You had mentioned you would have received the reports on fuel use and?
It was one of the buyers for the town, for the different entities, like the gasoline, how much was being used, who was using it, where that could be easily taken over by something else if we had the right equipment. And he did that, I think, every month, and then he retired, but those reports, I think, are in the town hall. Each one of those was of every month we got that complete figure.
Okay, we have Heath, Perry, Atwater, Parker.
So one of the ways that you pay for, that I think you could pay for the position, or at least offset a good deal of it, would be to set goals, like reduce energy usage by this percentage, reduce fuel usage by that percentage, you know, something to that effect. These are very small numbers, but if you get them in a line and add them up, it could help offset the costs and provide, you know, enough money to at least make it not a $90,000 a year expense to the taxpayer, per se. And if you look back just this past year, and I forget the exact number, so I'm just going to throw it out there, so this is fuzzy math, but we replaced the light fixtures in the community center, and I think within two years, it pays for everything, but just by the amount of energy that it saves. And I don't know what that cost is, but, you know, if you have someone pushing those kind of issues, I think you can get there a lot faster.
Okay, we have Zepari, Atwater, Parker, and then Baumgartner.
I think the question before us now is, do we want to write a new job description? There's been a lot of discussion, we have a basis for job description, it can be augmented. I'm not sure that I would be in favor of going ahead with this position, because of the expense versus the benefit, and the fact that many of the things that this person would recommend are obvious to everyone. And so that would be an additional expense to produce something that we can achieve simply by saying that this is a priority concern for the town of Groton, that we start looking at each of our projects as moving toward carbon neutral, and having whoever's designing those projects design that goal in the project. So I don't know that we really need a full-time person to do this, but I'd like to see, on the question of, should we look at it, and should we have a job description, and should we know what that job is going to cost us over the next 30 years? I think those are questions that can only be answered if we go ahead and get the job description. That does not mean we have to go ahead and fill the job, but those are, that's my point of view.
We have Counselor Atwater, Parker, and Baumgartner.
I have a question and then a comment. You made the statement that the Conservation Commission said that money saved from the plastic reduction, and I, I'm sorry, my ignorance, I don't know what money will be saved from the plastic reduction.
This is from Mr. Dunn, would you like, would you want me to read it? Anyone read it?
Well, I think his point was, for example, he was looking at trash, so he just, these numbers were on hand for him. The town spends 1.5 million on tonnage, or is it 3.9? I'm not sure which one. But basically, he says if you're spending $100,000 more on position, you'll need to reduce the trash tonnage by 6.5% or 1,724 tons. Of course, that's a one-year savings, but if you reduce it 6% this year and 6% next year, then you've got the savings in place to pay for.
Although over 30, although over 30 years, you'd run, you'd run out of 6%.
Exactly.
20 years.
Okay. The other thing in this job description that was written and so forth, is once it says pursue grants and other funding, and it makes me think back, I don't know, I want to say last winter, there was a young woman came in and made a report to us on some studies that she had done and so forth, and I think she was from one of the colleges or whatever. Is there, it seems as though, at this point, what we really need is someone maybe doing a PhD project at Avery Point, or at UConn, or at Connecticut College or something, to come in and kind of pull all these loose ends together, rather than our, spinning our wheels not knowing, I mean, the reports that Counselor Schmidt mentioned, I'm totally unaware of those, the Conservation Commission's reports, all of that, if we could have it together, if there was anything done in the first two years of this individual's responsibilities and so forth, to have a complete sort of package, to then understand, as Counselor Zepari says, do we write the description and not do it, or do it? I just find that we seem to be grasping at a lot of different straws here.
Counselor Parker, and then Baumgartner.
I want to wait on this personally, and I'm in agreement with Counselor Atwater about maybe having someone from one of the colleges who has to do their thesis papers and stuff, might be given an opportunity to be able to do this type of job, which would tie in with them graduating. I'm trying to figure out how it's supposed to save us money in the end by having a person in a position that we're still going to be paying for? Where does that balance out if they start doing the carbon neutral for the town? How does that reflect that it's going to be able to pay for that position? So if someone can clarify that for me, I greatly appreciate it. I'm confused. Now, I don't see where we're going to have a cost savings. If the person has to be here at least 30 years to figure things out for this program, the carbon neutral program, they have to be in their 30s in order to be able to complete this in their 60s or 70s. Are we saving money that way? I don't know, can you explain that? I don't understand that.
I wasn't the one to say it, but I think the point is that if you do a project that pays for, that reduces costs, pays for its suplets in two years, starting year three, that is savings to the general fund, to the tax burden, I think that's, is that sort of, Counselor Heath, where that was going?
Yeah, I mean, it's not 100, like a dollar for a dollar.
It would take, it would take a while to get there, though, before you could get there.
But it won't, it won't save money on the position, because as healthcare rises and cost of living, and where does the savings come in? If each year, we have a cost of living, say, and its health insurance benefits and stuff goes up.
Depends on how successful they are at making changes.
But how does that reflect money coming back into the town?
Well, it reflects the savings. If you're paying $100,000 now, and then all of a sudden, for utilities, and now you're paying $50,000, that's $50,000 freed up that you could put towards the position, I think that's the idea. So it depends then on how many of these projects you string together to get the savings, but it would take a while.
Counselor Baumgartner.
And I, and I think to Counselor Atwater's point, you know, having a, in my eye, you know, the, like what you described with the fellowship, the fellow worked in tandem with Rick Norris, who at the time was the Sustainability Coordinator, and I believe he provided her direction as to, and who to talk to, in, within the, within the town departments, and provided those resources, but as, I'm not sure if he did provide any expertise, or even mentored that person. I, and so I knew he stepped in the role, and he's kind of functioned and served many other roles. So I think it would be beneficial to us to have someone who is focused on these issues and doesn't have any form of distraction, that obviously, right now, the town is, you know, is limited on resources in every department, everyone is doing more duties than they should. And so, you know, I think what we, we really, we talked quite a bit about job descriptions, and that's okay, but I think we still don't have a roadmap. At the end of the day, the public will only see the job description on Indeed.com when it's posted. But once, you know, it's offered, that document comes down, and we don't have a set of goals or roadmap that that person can follow. And so I, and certainly you could argue they would be a part of building that roadmap, but I still think we need to have concrete goals and objectives that our town policies, and potentially in the form of ordinances, where we spell out that Groton will reduce our, you know, become carbon neutral by, you know, 20, 2030. Groton will protect X percentage amount of open space moving forward. Groton will manage stormwater management in this respect. Groton will encourage more people to get on their bikes and walk around town, as opposed to using their, their, their vehicle. And we don't have that document, and I think it really should be a priority moving forward, that we potentially present that, that document, and kind of in conjunction with, you know, hiring someone. So I don't think we can wait, I think we ought to do this now. I think it's equally as important to identify where that funding source will come from, whether it is contingency, but, or if it's someone we will hire after the fiscal year. But again, those are, those are questions that we can answer well, I think, taking steps to hire someone.
Counselor Heath, and then I would like to finish.
And just to reiterate, my position is to begin, to get the ball rolling. So I'd like to see the job description be rewritten, revised, updated, and have more specific goals in it than what's in the original. And incidentally, I think 30 years is too long, I think it should be 20, personal opinion. Beyond that, though, a question on the previous individual who was in sustainability, they were moved to another department to work on a project.
They're still in public works.
They're moved to a different job, different description?
Still the same job description, but they've been transferred to, and being paid out of the school for that project.
Gotcha. So what happens when that project is over?
I don't like to speak for him, but he's indicated that he's planning to retire.
Okay, assuming he wasn't, I mean, I wasn't speaking about the individual.
But he's not writing, so I'm just saying what he said.
But if, if that position was transferred back, we're looking at the?
We'd have to relook at it through the budget process, because there's no money there currently.
Correct. Right. And then was that a full-time position?
Yes.
Okay. And would you be able to do something like that in a part-time position, or?
It all depends on what level of service. Another thought that occurred to me as we're talking, as you talk about a part-time one, I think you'd have trouble getting a good enough person, I like to do with college, PhD, that type of thing, you know, doing a resi, what's lacking is that sustainability person, you know, has never done resilience, and we've really done nothing. I think a lot of the sustainability stuff is more common sense, so hard, sometimes though it's hard to, for instance, Counselors Zepari, you've asked me about getting the electric charging stations, well, I can't do that without staff, it's actually a lot more involved than it appears. You know, that's the type of thing I have to have staff to, or else you have to contract out the work to do one or the other, but we've not done anything on resilience, but I like the idea of a PhD person doing a base plan, maybe, but that's, they're probably not going to work so much, too much on an ongoing basis with the committees, but I thought maybe going out to COG, just to see the council government, say, hey, is there other, other towns that would want a cost share of a position, we get 50% of that position and pay 50% of that person, and, you know, I thought that'd be worth, at least throwing out there to see if it's an option.
And as, as we're going along here through our term, we're finding more and more things popping up, and the most recent thing is Casino Road, and it's flooding. And you're looking then at Gravel Street, and Pearl Street, and, you know, we're water on three sides, and we have to really start thinking about the resiliency. Counselor Zepari's nodding his head, he knows, he just built a new seawall. These are things we really have to start thinking about. So it is more than light bulbs and charging stations, we have to look at the whole community, and we need someone who's going to help us set policy. What are we going to do, you know, when those floods start happening more frequently? What's going to happen? How are we going to shore up our utilities, our water treatment plant, our wastewater plants? These are all really big things that are very important, and in my estimation, worth the money of hiring a professional that can look at doing this the right way, because it is, it's very consequential. And I agree, it should be, after talking to some other people, 20 years, carbon neutral rather than a 30. But were you going to say something else?
More along those lines, it's definitely getting critical that we need a resilience plan, we need policies. It's definitely getting critical that we need a resilience plan, we need policies. Hard part is a lot of this stuff is gonna be engineer-driven besides, you know, you're probably gonna still have some contractual work out there to look at engineering solutions at the same time. You know, we're gonna have to have engineering solutions with Casino Road as we look at it. So, you know, it's complicated. You know, it's good that you're discussing and there's a lot of different options and I'll be continuing to think through different options I could present to you. But we do need to do something with resilient stuff.
Counselor Zeperry.
I think, you know, I, I, I'm not changing my original opinion. I think that this is something we can accomplish without putting another $3 million position on the, on the town's back for the next 30 years. But I, I, I think that if we don't get something done soon, not only in Groton, but in every town in the country and every town on the planet, we're not gonna be talking about reducing carbon output in, in 30 years. We're gonna be talking about building levees around the town. The city of New Orleans is underwater now, as you know. It's below sea level. And it is sustained by a system of pumps and levees that keep the water out. And much of Groton may be subject to that. We are a healing country, so a lot of our, our property is more than 20 feet above sea level and is already, already protected by the hills that create dams in themselves or the inner valleys. But the, the periphery of the town is surrounded by water and close to the sea and we're anticipating a huge rise in sea level. We will lose that entire, I mean, the sustainability about, you know, I heard a presentation a few months ago with people talking about putting piles of rocks at two locations in the cove, what is it, the cove over by the Groton-Lonpoint Bridge. I think that's, that's shoveling against the tide. I mean, it's not gonna, it's not gonna solve the problem. When it gets to that point, we need to have levees. I want, I would hope that by reducing carbon output, we can stop the accumulation of CO2 in the upper levels of the atmosphere and reduce the penetration of the strong solar rays to the surface of the earth and reduce the amount of ice melting at the poles. But until we do that, I think that's what we're looking at. It's not, it's not something we can take casually.
Counselor Heat.
I'll just echo Counselor Zeperry's words because I agree 100%. It's, and just putting it in, in another perspective, we can't save the world by doing something in Groton, whether it's plastics reduction or coastal resiliency or anything. But we have to start looking at these things because it will cost more money if we don't look at them, in my opinion. And we've started doing that like with the Groton-Lonpoint Bridge. We now have designated a task force that's looking at what do you do? Because we don't have anybody on staff that can, as far as I know, tell us what you really need to do. And I think if you have a point person who can really drive that and coordinate the committees and coordinate the staff and coordinate the projects and provide policy options for the council, I think we'd be better off. We might save money in the future.
And even if you have a grad student, grad students need to eat, so you're gonna have to pay them something. It may not be, you would pay a professional, but you're still gonna have to pay them so they have a, they can live. And then you lose them after a few years when their thesis is done unless then you hire them. So, I mean, you're, there's gonna be an expense incurred. It's just a matter of whether you think it's worth it or not. So at this point, everybody's spoken, I think, more than once. So we're asking for-
Can I put on a new motion?
Yes.
To recommend, I recommend that the town manager and his staff review the current job description and make-
You could finish saying it, but then if you could write it please, that way I can present it for the minutes.
I recommend that the town manager and staff review the current position and make any adjustments to present to the council.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat what I think you said and you tell me if I'm wrong or not, okay? To recommend the town manager and staff review the current sustainability position and make any adjustments and present them to the council.
Correct.
Is there a second on Counselor Parker's motion? So moved by Parker, seconded by Atwater. Is there a discussion? I see a member of our Resilience and Sustainability Task Force just came in. Counselor Heat. Thank you, Counselor Parker.
Just that I understand the, or the second motion is to review the current position, not to write a new position.
Correct.
And the original motion is to write a brand-new position?
We already have a position, all we need to do is tweak it.
That's fine. I don't, I'm, I'm not-
Description, not position. Right. You're not looking at the real person who's actually in that position.
No, no.
Description, not position.
You're right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
So can I, can I change this?
Yes.
So Counselor Atwater, are you accepting to-
I'll second you.
Okay. So current job description. Okay. So I'm fine with that as long as we get the ball rolling.
That doesn't mean I'm ready for us to, we gotta figure this out, how we would get funded. I'm just-
Right. But before we even get to that point, it has to be something that we're all comfortable with. Mr. Burt.
I'll also, as part of that, we'll also cost it out what we think the cost would be. I'm also gonna go out to the CAG to see about, just so we know if anyone's willing to share a position with us. Just so we know all of the options.
Right. I saw Mayor Passaro and I was asking him about his situation. And they have their director of planning that does their sustainability stuff, but I'm not sure how much they're doing because he referenced the state of Connecticut plan, which our planning department also does. And I don't know if their, their staff does anything beyond that. So I'm getting a no from Counselor Bob Gardner. Okay. So I'm not, I'm not sure, but that's, that would be great if we could, and I think Counselor Heat suggested also trying to cost share with another town. So that would be great if we could do that. So then I would support Counselor Parker's motion simply to get the ball rolling and to have come back with, you know, a job description that we're all comfortable with and then we'll have options and we could vote again. What kind of timeframe are we looking at here?
I don't think it'll take long.
Okay.
And if Counselor Heat could send me a link to the job description he saw just so I could use as potential tweak material.
And I believe, Mr. Stever, you offered the services of the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force to help also if the manager needed help with any tweaking on the current job description. Is there any discussion on Counselor Parker's motion? Okay, seeing none, let me read it again. We will vote to recommend that the town manager and staff review the current job description, sustainability job description, and make any adjustments and present to the council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? So moved unanimously. Excellent. Yes. We have one more thing. So, so let's make the motion because I think we're going to executive session. So if, Counselor Schmidt, or I'll just read it. We are on item 2019-527 Telecommunicators Collective Bargaining Agreement on page 32. I hereby move that the members of the Town Council Committee of the whole, along with Town Manager John Burt, Assistant Town Manager Bob Zagami, and Town Attorney Eileen Duggan go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-202 for the purpose of discussing strategy under negotiations with respect to collective bargaining units. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Bob Gardner.
Five minutes.
All those in favor of executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
I wish that she was on all those that voted.
I didn't want to. We're just, we're just, we're just.
Did he second it or seconded?
We already moved and seconded, so I will withdraw my motion if Counselor Bob Gardner withdraws his second. And we want to add Chief Fusaro.
Yes, please.
Okay. I make a motion. I hereby move that the members of the Town Council Committee of the whole, along with Town Manager John Burt, Assistant Town Manager Bob Zagami, Town Attorney Eileen Duggan, and Chief LJ Fusaro go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-202 for the purpose of discussing strategy under negotiations with respect to collective bargaining units. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Heat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We are at six because Counselor Zeperry stepped out, but we are six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. We're in executive session. Thank you. Thank you. We are out of executive session and it is now 8:58. And I don't remember which counselor we left off on. Counselor Schmidt or Counselor Zeperry, could you read the 2019-527 Telecommunicators Collective Bargaining Agreement on page 32, please?
Right. To recommend a resolution approving the tentative telecommunications collective bargaining agreement, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Zeperry, seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion? All those in favor of 2019-527 Telecommunicators Collective Bargaining Agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven counselors. That takes care of all of our agenda items. Is there any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob Gardner. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at nine o'clock.